I'd like to open this Village Board Meeting. This is number 3,086. It's November 24th, 2014. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Meyer.
Here.
Abernathy.
Present.
Semple.
Here.
Boss.
Here.
Kim.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Great. Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Before we get going, before we get to the approval of minutes, and on our normal business, I'd like to just take a few moments, if you'll afford me just a few moments, to make some comments on the holiday season. It's holiday season. You can see we're celebrating just a little bit. Thanksgiving's coming up on Thursday. Hanukkah starts Tuesday on the 16th of December. And Christmas is, of course, Thursday on the 25th this year. I tell you, I'm getting ready for the holidays. At some point, I think, we're gonna have so many people in my house, we've been in the house ready, I'm gonna have to, I'm afraid to count the number of people I'm gonna have because I know we have village ordinances that have occupancy related to them. I'll have to back off those just a little bit for a night or two, at least for me. But on Thanksgiving, you know, every president, starting from Washington to Lincoln to Obama, you know, proclaims a day of Thanksgiving and then encourages all the citizens, all the residents, to give thanks for those blessings we have and give thanks specifically to give thanks to God. And it's always a good exercise for all of us to do that occasionally, if not at least once a year, certainly more often, but it's always a good reminder. And for myself, I just want to express what I'm thankful for in thinking this through. I'm thankful that I live in a community which has so many caring people. You know, it's no secret that Mundaline is not the wealthiest community in Lake County in terms of money, median income, and material wealth. But I'll tell you what, we are extremely rich. We are a wealthy community in terms of caring people. The more and more I get to know more of the churches in town, the Boy Scout troops, the sports community, the volunteerism we have here is just amazing, just amazing. And so, and I'm thankful for that. Some communities, you put the word out for volunteers and you get crickets, you know, but not here. It's just amazing whenever, wherever you look, people come out and they care for others in so many parts of our community. I'm thankful for the trustees. Yes? I'm thankful for you guys. And the reason is this, as much as, you know, to the naked eye, you think, oh, gosh, they must really not like each other sometimes. And you know, here's the thing, is we have a great, healthy relationship because I think, and I'm thankful for this part, and that is because at the end of the day, the motives behind the trustees and myself is always, what is best for the village? What's best for the village? And I'm thankful for that, that we have vigorous debate, and it gets spirited sometimes. Maybe it'll, maybe we'll see some tonight, who knows? You don't know what you're gonna get some nights. But you know what? At the end of the day, that's what I'm thankful for, is the pure motives that we all have here. Finally, the staff, I am thankful we have such a professional staff. This has been a big year. Lots of challenges, new hall, lots of plates spinning at the same time, and so many departments and for each department to be healthy and seeking such good excellence in a professional way. You know, not all communities have that. They might have a department here to under investigation and in shambles. We don't have that here, and I'm thankful for that. You know, we're all thankful for our good health and our family, and when I look at our village, I see health and I see a nice family environment here. So I just want to encourage everyone, you know, to give thanks yourself, and I think I speak for all the trustees and the staff and myself, wishing everyone in Mundaline a very, very happy Thanksgiving this season. With that, let's go to the approval of minutes. First up, the committee of the whole meeting, November 10th, I need a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved. Second?
Motion by Abernathy, second by Kim. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next up, the regular meeting minutes from November 10th, 2014.
So moved. I have a correction.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. The correction?
The correction is under my report. It is regarding public land donation agreement. At the bottom of the comments, it said that trustee Voss further stated that her no vote depicts her displeasure with the term limits, but not the project in general. I don't actually believe I said that. I was not happy with the change in terms, but I'm also not happy with the economic incentive that was offered to them. So I would prefer that it just say that my no vote depicts my pleasure with the new Because I don't think I said that I wasn't displeased, that I was pleased with the project.
What page is that on?
It is...
This is page 4B.
Thank you.
At the bottom, no, it's packet page. What? Packet page what? 14?
Packet page, I think it's, hold on, I'll tell you in a second. Packet page 14. It should just end with, my no vote depicts my displeasure with the new terms, and not, and nothing after but.
Thank you.
No but.
No but.
And then with that correction, I'm good.
Okay. Any more discussion on that? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Boss.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Motion carries. This takes us to the part of the evening where we have public commentary. Would anyone in the audience here live wish to address the board at this time? No? Okay. We'll close the floor then and move on to presentations and awards. There are none. Public hearings, there are none listed. Under the mayor's report, we have a meeting call for January 12th, 2015. January 12th, 2015. This will be a TIF review board meeting at 6:30 PM that evening, 30 minutes before the regular village board meeting. All right? And that's it with my report. Let's move on to trustee reports. We go to public works committee, trustee Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, excuse me, tonight, we want to talk about a resolution waiving the formal bidding process, accepting proposals, and approving purchase orders for the purchase of a 2015 Ford Transit van from Nableton Ford of Libertyville, Illinois. And so, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution saying all that, instead of repeating all that.
All right. Motion by Meyer.
Second.
Second by Semple. Discussion.
Yes, I have a question.
All right. Trustee Voss.
So, in the packet, it said that this was not available through the, with the state purchased contract, but do we know what, if this is, if this cost is similar to what the state cost would have been?
I don't know the exact answer to that, but I would say it's probably very competitive with it. I know that we went out and got three proposals for the vehicle, and so it was the best price we were able to get, but the car just, or the van, just simply isn't available on the state purchase.
Did it used to be? Have we not got that for state purchase before?
I don't know specifically, other than I would say that, you know, the needs of the water department now are maybe a little bit different than they have been. I know that they're changing out their vehicles to these vans that have a little bit more utility to them, instead of the trucks, they used to use trucks. And so, we purchased, I think, our first one last year, a year or two ago on that, so...
And was that purchased with the state bid?
I just don't recall, don't recall.
Okay. Thank you.
Is it?
The Transit van is brand new, so it hasn't made the state bid. It's got little things to pay.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, and I don't have anything else tonight, and that would be it for my report.
Thank you. Finance committee, next. Trustee Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have a number of motions. The first is a motion to reimburse trustee Meyer the amount of $109.20 for her expenses related to the Illinois Municipal League Conferences next September, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Sullivan, second by Semple. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Meyer.
Abstain.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Second motion is in regard to the fire pension compliance report that is before you, and that is, the motion is to accept the fiscal year 2014 firefighter's pension fund compliance report, and I will make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Sullivan, second by Semple. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We also have a motion in regard to the police pension compliance report. That motion is to accept the fiscal year ending 2014 police pension fund compliance report, and I so move.
Motion by Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Semple. Discussion. Everyone's afraid to hit the button and talk because we're getting the revives, we're a little slow on that. Okay. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next motion is another lengthy background to study. I'm sure everybody's got it well in hand, and that's, that's our comprehensive annual financial report, and we have to move to accept the village's 2014 comprehensive annual financial report and the management letters there, too, and I will make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Sullivan, second by Abernathy. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Final motion is one to pay a number of bills to AT&amp;T. You'll recall, we were concerned about the large amount of the last bill, and Administrator Lobato explained that they vary considerably, and of course, this one is on the very low end of bills from AT&amp;T. It is an amount of $2,933.81, and I'll move to pay those bills in that amount.
Second.
Motion by Sullivan, second by Voss. Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Kim.
Thank you. Last time, we had mentioned that it was a high amount, and it was explained that it was due to the timing of our meetings and when the bills come in. I was just curious if there are any, like, late fees that are also tied or occurred due to the fact of the timing, or no?
No, there are no late fees.
Okay. Thank you. Mics are hot.
We don't pay them any, we don't pay late fees. May, in a second.
Anyone else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Meyer.
Abstain.
Motion carries.
This evening, on our omnibus list of motions, we have a motion to pay a bill list, a number of pages of bills to pay. The total of these is $1,113,376.48. Some of the major items on that, first is an amount to amalgamated bank in order to pay down principal and interest on some bonds. This amounts to $239,112.50. We're going to pay $48,912 to Geewald Hamilton, three invoices regarding streets, engineering and regard to streets. We're going to pay $99,189 to Lakeside Equipment for screens, and I'm suspecting, I'm fairly certain that these are screens at the wastewater treatment plant. We are going to pay $106,000 sum to Medline, this in regard to our sales tax sharing agreement with Medline. We're going to pay $181,910 to Piratano Construction for the replacement of rot 60 water mains. And finally, we're going to pay $46,082.04 to SB Mundaline LLC in regard to our soon-to-be-completed economic incentive agreement for the Mundaline Crossings Shopping Center. Unless anyone has a question or a comment in regard to finance, that completes my report.
Very good. All right. Let me make sure I got the... Okay. Moving on. Next up, Public Safety Committee, trustee Semple.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before the village board meeting, we had a Public Safety Committee meeting, and during that committee meeting, we kind of had to cut it off a little bit short. We had talked about reconvening during the village board meeting to get a consensus on moving forward with the canine unit. We had the Geonimores here, who were the catalyst for this whole discussion, and come to find out, as they were exiting, they said they actually had their checkbook here and were hoping to peel off a check for the village for a canine, and I told them, well, hopefully we'll be contacting them in the near future. So, Mr. Lobato, or chief, are you looking for, do we have to have a vote or just a consensus here? Because the big issue, of course, is the commitment to hire an additional officer, and this is a special officer, that would be a new hire effective the next fiscal year, but the reason being, we would want to make this hopeful commitment now, is to basically get the dog ordered, get the dog in process, and then you bring the trainer on in six months down the road, and they start working with the dog, and we would have a canine unit in about a year from now or so, more or less. Little sooner. So, what would you like, or can we, can the mayor try to get a consensus here? What do we want to do?
Yeah, I think so. I think we're looking for consensus moving forward. This came up, I think, at the last budget cycle. There was some discussion about it, and because it's such a long lead time to do this, we just kinda, we'll plan for it as we build the budget, unless the board thinks otherwise. But if we do that, you have to understand that there is that commitment, because we're gonna start investing in the purchase of the dog. I need to have police chief be able to speak confidently with people that might be wanting to donate funds for the dog, and once that process starts, it's hard to back up on, so...
Okay. Well, then, let's go around the board and just get everyone's thoughts and see what the consensus is. We can start.
I'll start off, Mr. Mayor. I'm absolutely in support of this. I think the chief has made his case, and I think it would be good for the community to have a canine unit, and, you know, the unfortunate thing with any dog is, they never seem to live long enough, so hopefully, we can get a good eight to 10, seven to 10 years or so commitment out of the dog and the officer, and be a good thing for Mundaline. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Abernathy?
Before I, I just do have one more question. You had said we've had to borrow a dog from other depart, other towns close by, correct?
Yeah, hopefully, close by, when they are close by, yeah.
Okay. Is there a cost involved to us when we have to borrow that?
No, it's not. It's a reciprocal type agreement with other agencies, and I would say, on average, we request a dog for various things between 12 to 20 times per year.
Okay.
Better than one, once per month.
Oh, okay. Well, that was my question, and since my biggest question is, is there a need for it, and he just, Chief Gunther just answered that question, 12 to 20 times, so yes, I would be for this.
Okay. Trustee Meyer?
Yeah, I support the concept.
Okay. Over here. Trustee Voss?
I'm all in.
Okay.
Can't wait.
Trustee Kim?
I have some more questions.
Okay.
Thank you. I want to make sure I, you know, thoroughly picked all the brainfolds, but, okay, in the cost that you had given us, there was the 7,500 and the 5,000 and the 93,000. Is the cost for adjusting the police cars also included in these figures?
It is, yes.
Which, which one of them? The, the initial 20,000, is that where it would be?
Yeah, correct. It's about $20,895, and that includes outfitting the car. Understand that the vehicle itself would be taken from the existing fleet. I'm not going to buy a new car, but the equipment for the car would all be purchased and placed into an existing vehicle that we have in the fleet.
So, in addition to the hire of one officer to replace, you know, the one who is then handling the dog, is there any other plan to hire more officers in the next fiscal year?
No, this would be my only request for personnel in the coming fiscal year, provided that things continue to go in the direction that they're going and nothing changes.
Okay. Concise answers. Good. I noticed that some of the funding for the dog would come out of, like, seizure or forfeiture of assets. With, with the way things are a little bit changing in those regulations, do you see it being sustainable to be able to pay for the dog in the coming future?
I do. I've been watching what's taking place, you know, nationally, and it is sustainable. We have the funds now to sustain it for several years moving on, even if they were to cut the program tomorrow, I don't see that happening. You know, you have to understand that any of these seizures that we might claim have to go through the legal process, and a judge has to award that to us after hearing the case and determining probable cause and, and seeing the weight of the case before he even, you know, awards it to us. Sometimes, it's awarded back to the individual. So, there's a process for that, and I don't see those particular seizures going away anytime soon.
Okay. Also, then, in the case of, like, legalization of cannabis, I'm just wondering, are they able to train the dog to then ignore it?
No. Eventually...
That was for medical cannabis, which is different, because you still couldn't have it recreationally, but I'm just...
Eventually, they, if it becomes legal, it probably would drop from the training cadre. However, if you had a dog that was already trained on that particular scent, then he's trained on that particular scent, which is why I was very glad that, and I didn't ask them ahead of time, they chose to show pseudo cocaine and heroin, which is a huge problem for us. These animals can detect all of those things, too. So, you know, the focus would probably be on those, and we'll see what happens and, you know, as society moves forward.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I had, and I would be in favor.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, I'm very much in favor of this. We've, we've talked about this many times over the years, long before I was on the board. I can remember when it was trustee Semple mentioned, Mundaline PD did have canine unit. His name was Judge, and I don't think he was the dog that you saw here today, but he was, he was effective. There were a couple of questions. Will we consider, when we hire a replacement for the canine officer, that we're just one short of our sworn strength? Or will we, will we add and consider ourselves to be two short, two officers below full strength?
If I understand correctly, if we hired this officer, then we would then be one short of our authorized strength.
Okay. All right. And I know you realize how important it is to make a good selection of who the canine handler will be.
Yes.
That that person needs to be completely committed to his dog.
Yeah, and I'm actually glad that you brought that up, because I think that's one thing we kind of skipped in the, in the presentation, is, you're absolutely correct, it's paramount that that individual is, has the level of commitment required for, for this commitment. This is a 10-year commitment that you have to understand is part of his life, or her life, every single day. And the process that goes through is, if the dog is selected and purchased from TOPS, they assist you with the selection of the actual officer itself, so much so that they go to the home of the prospective officers, do a home visit, determine whether it's a good environment, talk with neighbors, and try to anticipate any of those issues that may be coming up. It's very in-depth with how they, how they go through this, and although I will say it's very rare, you know, there are things and times where the, you know, you make a bad selection and you have to stop and go back and move forward, and that's happened once or twice in the county that I'm aware of, and in both situations, the recommendation to terminate that particular handler was made by TOPS, and they then funded the purchase of a new dog for a new handler to continue that program, because they feel that, that strongly about it also.
Very good. Now, this, this will be an extremely effective law enforcement tool, and I think it's overdue. I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Well, I certainly support it, just for the benefit of those that are watching. We had the presentation before him, oh, timeout, there we go. I certainly support this, for the benefit of those watching on the recording, we, the meeting beforehand, we, lots of benefits were really brought out, and just, the most compelling to me, it seemed, was the, the additional safety that would bring not only to officers but to suspects, because of the mere presence of the dog, a suspect who would otherwise be aggressive, the presence of a dog has a way of changing things, the attitudes, and so, instead of a suspect maybe doing something and getting hurt, hurting an officer, the dog changes the attitude, and so, we see a much higher level of safety by having the presence of the dog there. That's, that's a compelling thing to me, reason, one of the reasons to have a dog. But the benefits were just numerous. There's a cost, we've talked about that, and I'm definitely in favor of this. So, it looks like we have a consensus here, so, good.
So, chief, what are next steps?
Well, I spoke with TOPS in anticipation that this would come this way. By the way, I thank you very much, and they are, said, they don't, you know, they can proceed forward without, you know, even a check at this point, knowing that there's a commitment from the city to move forward with it. They'll begin to look for the right fit of animal. We'll meet and talk about what that, that fit is, what we are looking to stress through the program. You know, I had, I had originally asked to not stress the aggression or the protection part of it, because that, you know, while that needs to be there, I don't know that that's the focus that we're after. We're after the focus of, you know, the narcotic protection and the lost and missing, and they break their program such that those training blocks are devoted in four-hour blocks, so we can, you know, focus on those particular areas that we want to focus on. So, we'll sit down, we'll talk about what that is that we're looking for from the program, and begin the animal selection process and, and getting him or her, I think it's always him, shipped over to, to us and, and start looking. In probably about 60 to 90 days, we'll start to look at, for the selection of the handler itself and make that announcement, I would hope, you know, the end of February, March, April area.
Can I ask one more question? Sorry. We've talked a lot about temperament and work. As trustee Sullivan knows, shepherds are frequently have trouble with hip dysplasia, so I assume that these dogs come certified? So I assume that these dogs come certified?
Yes, and with a two-year guarantee. It's 18 months or two-year guarantee on their hips. So if there's a problem, you get a new one.
Okay.
New dog.
You can't give them a... Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Chief. And it did lead to one last question I had. When we initially had these discussions, we had talked about a vehicle. And I just assumed, of course, that we would have an SUV that we would utilize as a canine unit. But I guess that's not necessarily the case, correct?
No, they do utilize SUVs, and it may end up being that way. However, something I didn't think about was that leaping back and forth to a higher level, sometimes the sedan is better for the animal. So these new SUVs are a lot different than the old traditional SUVs, and they are much lower. But we'll talk through that with them and see what they recommend.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, let's get back to our Public Safety Committee agenda here. First up is a records management system purchase. And I'll make the motion, and then we'll have the Chief walk us through. I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution waiving the bidding process for records management software services, approve the purchase order in the amount of $61,000, the immediate payment of $45,000, and authorize Chief Gunther to sign the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Semple, second by Abernathy.
Chief, can you walk us through real quick what we're doing here?
Yes, if you remember back in July, August, I came to you with CAD to purchase the CAD. You approved that, and that was the first phase. I said I'd be coming back to you with the second phase of it. This is the second phase of it. And to kind of just give you a little bit of a snapshot fiscally, what we're talking about here, currently, our CAD and record management system, which is what I'm asking for today, is about $65,000 per year in maintenance costs. By purchasing this records management system, combined with the CAD, there will only be a $30,000 per year maintenance cost. We'll be saving double our costs towards maintenance. And this system comes with the components to add on the electronic citation and electronic crash reporting modules, which will, again, improve our efficiency and hopefully minimize our personnel needs on those kinds of documents and records.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, anyone else? Clerk, please, I'm sorry? Who? Okay.
Quickly, did you, are there, I assume, so there were two real systems that we had bid on. I assume that you've checked them out, that there are other places in Illinois that use them, and they have a good record?
Yes, not only did we do one go around, and we ourselves looked at four different companies by ourselves. But we also then found that there was a consortium that was looking at the same purchase that included eight or nine different agencies, including, you should have these documents.
Yeah, I do. So that was my next question, is, so it's cheaper for us to purchase this solo than as this consortium?
Yes, it is. Because the consortium needed to come up with an equation that was fair for all, and therefore they based it on population. We are the largest municipality population-wise, therefore we are shared in the largest portion of the cost. And so Capers, who we looked at originally by ourselves, had given us the individual quote prior and honored that outside the consortium. So that's why we were electing to go with them. And they are an Illinois-based company, and they do have multiple clients within Illinois.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just add one thing to that. It's when we looked at this with the consortium, the Capers product that we're looking at, the cost differential saves us about $250,000 over the 10-year life expectancy of this type of hardware or software. And so it's a far better deal for us and why we chose not to stick with the consortium too.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I wanted to point out that even though you didn't send it out to bid, you guys did a whole bunch of research. So you kind of went above and beyond on this, and you saved a ton of money, so that's great. What I wanted to ask was, based on what I read here, it really is a repository for incident reports. So there is no records management of the license plate scan data? This is only for incidents, it looks like. Is that correct?
That is largely correct. This is any service call that we go on generates a paper trail, if you will. It doesn't necessarily mean there's an extensive report, but we're required to document everything we do to the tune of 20,000-plus per year. That's what this system will be tracking and documenting for. It also creates reports that we're required to provide to the state on various things, crime reports and to the FBI and to the state, et cetera. So all of that becomes now electronically and saves the time personnel-wise to not have to manually enter these things, review them. This now becomes an electronic process and speeds it up and creates those reports for us.
So these are only for the incidents where you're called, and then you have to respond?
Yeah, but it also tracks our traffic stop. Any traffic stop that's done, a call is generated. So it tracks all that stuff.
But a traffic stop is different than driving by and getting a registry and database of...
Correct. That's maintained in a separate database.
Okay, so this is unrelated to that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is a little bit vague. But if you recall, I believe it was about a year ago, or as we were going in the budget process, we had talked about doing some remodeling at the police department to basically make it safer for the police staff, who is down there, to make it just a safer environment. We had an incident in Vernon Hills where a Mundeline resident went to the police station, didn't know where the Mundeline police station was, so they went to the Vernon Hills police station instead and pulled out a gun. So based upon that, the Chief felt it was be good to tighten up ours a little bit and make it a little bit safer for our employees. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to authorize staff to solicit proposals for the renovation of that records area at the police department. Did I say all that correctly, Chief?
You did.
Second.
Motion by Semple, second by Abernathy. Discussion?
Yes.
Trustee Voss?
I think that this is a great idea, but I'm just wondering if we've given any thought to doing that at that window there, where as we've had some tours that have been conducted and other people have said, you know, people who sit there on the front line and they're exposed, and if someone's angry, that there's nothing that stops them. And in talking to the staff that sit there, they are fairly cognizant that they're at risk every day. And I'm wondering if perhaps as part of safe security improvements that we're doing at the police station, we ought to look at doing them here.
Well, we have taken a look at that. You know, first of all, they like us far better here than at the police department. All right, go on.
True.
But we do have, we've given that a lot of thought. And the design of this counter here, there was a lot of thought put into it and with input from the police department. And quite coincidentally, this just came up recently, and I think there's some training. Part of what goes on is how to handle somebody that is maybe getting a little aggressive. And I know that there's, the police department's coming over and is going to train, which they do periodically, and it's been a while, but to review some security procedures in the new building, number one. But also, that counter is designed in such a way, certainly it's open, and we're walking a fine line between being completely closed off and being a little bit more welcoming without being behind the bulletproof glass. And so we balance both safety and aesthetics in the environment that we're in. And the counter height is that height for a certain reason. And the depth, the distance that the employee is from the customer is a certain distance for a reason. And those types of things go into putting employees a little bit more at ease. We also have security measures there. There's a panic button at both stations. So police department's a block away. So hopefully, when that happens, and it happens from periodically, but not very frequently. And based on our history of what we've done, we've simply not had a problem. So...
Except, and I appreciate that, but we don't have a problem till we have a problem, then it's too late.
Yeah, right.
And if, you know, I guess as a trustee, I would like to know what the cost would be, what it would take to do that, and what it would look. If we're having someone come in to give us information on that at the police department, then you'd hate to have had the opportunity to do something and not do something and have an incident come up that we could have prevented and didn't simply because we had never had it come up. I just, I guess, if we're hiring somebody, how much more could it cost to have them just look at that and say, this is what it would take?
Well, frankly, I don't care if it costs 50 cents. I wouldn't want a bulletproof glass over there. I don't care what the, you know, that's just...
So maybe there's something else. Or maybe they would say, as Mr. Libero said, well, if you don't want bulletproof glass, you've done everything else that you can do. Maybe they would say that. It would be, maybe they would say something else. Maybe it doesn't have to be bulletproof glass. Maybe we should add a, I don't know, backsplash, if you will, that goes up. I don't know, because that's not my field of expertise. I'm just thinking if we're concerned about safety at the police station, these guys handle money, they handle irate people as well. Perhaps we ought to look into their safety.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's a point well taken. I mean, you can, I mean, you can probably go over the top with this kind of stuff because there's never, you know, hindsight's always 20/20, so you hope nothing happens. But looking back on it, there's always things you can do. But you try and balance that with cost and what you're up to. But there's also been, reported in the national news, a number of incidents involving village boardrooms and shootings inside boardrooms. And so there's nothing here either. And, I mean, it's, you could look at this and look at others. You know, I don't know...
So maybe that's what they would recommend, is that there's a, what do you call those? You know, a gun detector, a metal detector thing? I don't know. I don't know. I just wonder if, now that we're doing it for the police station and we're already hiring somebody, if we should look into it here.
Don't we already have a sticker that says to leave your gun?
Yeah, I think if somebody's really angry and going to come in, that's not going to deter them.
That wasn't...
Yeah, I mean, it's really at the pleasure of the board. I mean, it's, you can...
Well, I know how much thought went into all of that, Mr. Libero. And I know a tremendous amount of effort. He alluded to just scratch the surface of the hours that went into the design of everything going on back there. You can go overboard real easily. I don't think we're a community that needs to go there. But I'll open it up to the board if you guys want to. Are these folks that are consultants that would come in and give it a gander? Or what?
First of all, I must say I'm offended that you don't think you have any security during the board meetings. What this is, is this is a very specific request to go to bid. The bid has been drafted with the assistance of the Public Works Division, specifically to come in and look at what we want done to our facility. So that's all I'm asking for today, is to put this to bid and see who comes forth with pricing and what that looks like. And then, you know, then I'll come back to you after that with what those costs are. But we've drawn a specific bid up for this particular. And we're in a much different situation than would be here. We already have a large majority of the construction and the work for this done. It was done at the building, when the building was built, to include, you know, bulletproof drywall in the areas that are already existing there. This is in addition and add-on. So the cost would be, is going to be much less than what it would be to do that here.
Okay, so these folks wouldn't be able to come here and do a security review?
No, I didn't. They could, but I think the appropriate process would be to let us do this bid once we've decided fairly on a contract. We might get their point of view on this, if that's what the board is looking for, as to what that might entail. And then you can discuss it further.
Okay, so we'll wait to see.
Yeah.
Is that okay? Okay, very good. Any other discussion on item two? No? Clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Final motion on the Public Safety Committee section is a resolution waiving the formal bidding process for the purchase of a Ford Explorer. This one goes for the fire department. So with that, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution waiving the formal bidding procedures and authorizing the purchase of a 2015 Ford Explorer four-wheel-drive SUV as listed on the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative, SPC, from Braidman Ford, 2038 West Waukegan Road in Glenview, Illinois, in the amount of $26,813.
Motion by Semple?
Second.
Second by Abernathy. Discussion?
Chief, what are we doing here?
This is just a routine replacement of a staff vehicle that was provided in the CIP budget request for fiscal year 15, and just about that simple.
And the vehicle is similar to the other...
It'll be identical to the ones that we have right now. And of course, the four-wheel drive has been a very nice added asset to our fleet.
Terrific, Chief, thank you. Any other questions?
Any other discussion? Yes, Trustee Sullivan?
Is this, Chief, is this your vehicle? Okay.
Who's using, what do we use this vehicle for now?
It will become my vehicle, and then we step down vehicles from there.
Okay, so we're replacing your vehicle. When we purchased your vehicle, we purchased two identical vehicles.
Correct.
And Deputy Chief is driving one?
Right.
Why don't we have to replace the Deputy Chief's vehicle, along with your vehicle?
Because this was planned for the 2004 Chevy that's in the Bureau.
What are the mileage numbers on your vehicle?
I'd have to look and see. I think probably about 40,000 miles. So it's not, in replacing it, it is stepping it down for continued useful life. So we had the two SUVs at the same time, and now we're just replacing the 2004 Chevy that's got about, I'm going to look at Deputy Chief Leig, 115,000 miles on it right now. So we move these vehicles down through a strategic, you know, through the operation into the Fire Prevention Bureau, and then they're taken offline from there. So we will finally delete the 2004 vehicle.
So this 2004 Chevrolet Impala will be removed?
Correct. That'll be removed from the fleet. So this is just a replacement. It's not any expansion or anything like that. Yep.
And a 2008 Chevy Impala and a 2002 Crown Vic will be placed in service as fleet vehicles?
Correct.
Where is this SUV with 40,000 miles going?
That will be part of, that will go to Deputy Chief Leig, and his car will go into the Fire Prevention Bureau. So we just step them down each time we purchase them that way.
And we are eliminating one vehicle, that?
Yeah, it's a one-for-one.
So we're going to trade it in?
No, I think Central Garage will probably take that to just the auction.
Oh, okay. But it's going out of the fleet?
Yeah. In fact, it's sitting in back with no license plates on it and removed now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm sorry, I just need to follow up on this. So we bought a vehicle for you and DC Leig at the same time?
Yes.
Yours has 40,000 miles on it. How old is it?
It's a 2011.
And DC Leig, how many miles is on yours? 50?
Yeah.
So...
So we'll slow down the use of his by mine going to him, and then that goes into the Fire Prevention Bureau. We're trying to stagger date. Normally, we would not have had... We're trying to stagger date, we're, normally we would not have had the two SUVs at the same time, so we're trying to create a spread here so that these are not all coming up at the same time. So he has way more miles on his, so we're going to slow that down a little bit so we can keep it longer and he will use my car then.
I'm just trying to figure out why we're averaging so many miles per year on a...
Oh, we're running all over the place. I mean, we're, you know, we are, we're operating out of town as much as we are in town.
And...
Yeah, we average, we average, you know, a strong 15,000 miles a year.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Simple.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, Chief Gunther, anything for police? I know you've said a lot tonight, anything else, announcements or anything?
Yeah, I'm not going to stop just yet. Um, we have the, uh, tomorrow, we have the turkey giveaway. Um, so, uh, we've got 40 families that will be getting turkeys out too. I know, uh, a couple of, uh, the trustees are going to be over to help out. Um, and then we've got the spaghetti dinner right after the tree lighting, which is December 5th, um, 5:30 to 8:30, so we'll be doing the spaghetti dinner over at the police department. Um, and then I would just say, I hope by the next meeting, I'll be able to bring, um, one of the new squad cars with the new design, uh, the graphic design, uh, on it, which I hope you like. Uh, we worked a lot on that with, uh, um, Don Genich, and so we should have those, at least one of those ready by the 8th. And we're currently, uh, have a committee together looking at the replacement, uh, redesign of the patch on our uniforms, um, to fall a little bit more in line with, uh, with our branding and, um, kind of getting ourselves up to speed here, so soon enough. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Sashco for fire?
Certainly, thank you. On December 6th, we will have our Holiday Heroes Blood Drive at Station 1 on Midlothian Road, so that is from 9:00 in the morning till 3:00 in the afternoon. We actually are going to have two separate raffles. There'll be a dinner raffle for one of the restaurants in town, and then we also will have a Blackhawks piece yet to be named because we like to keep that a secret until you come and donate blood. Uh, so hopefully we'll see a lot of people out there. This is probably the most critical time of the year is the holidays with the drop-off of blood donations, and as I've said in the past, there's 1,000 units a day in the Chicago market that are necessary. So, um, to everybody watching on TV, hopefully we'll have you out on Saturday, uh, December 6th. And then just an update for the board, uh, we do have a, um, a sale on the ladder truck that we retired when we purchased the used, uh, tower ladder. Uh, that actually is going to go to the Grayslake Fire Protection District, uh, will also be used at the College of Lake County for training. Um, so they'll get some useful life out of it, even though it won't be a frontline vehicle anymore. So I plan on bringing that contract sale, uh, to the board on December 8th. It will be for the $65,000 that was the value that was put on by the brokers, uh, that had looked at the vehicle. So we're, in essence, getting top dollar. That was the top dollar we thought we would get for that minus any brokerage fees, and they have agreed to the $65,000 price. Um, so we actually, so that it didn't get, or deteriorate in the weather and action, we've actually moved it out to Grayslake Station 3, so it's housed inside, um, kind of like a car dealer says, why don't you take it home for a drive and see how it fits? And so it worked out really well. So I'll bring that back on December 8th.
Thank you, Chief. And December 5th, you are escorting Santa Claus, correct?
Santa will be escorted, uh, on December 5th, that is correct, and, uh...
Very good. Just wanted to make sure he's counting on you, so...
Yeah, I know.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all we've got.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, Community and Economic Development Committee, Trustee Voss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, tonight, the first item of business is a fence variance request. It's 688 Wertham Circle. Is the petitioner here? Okay. Um, so first thing is I'll make a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes and findings of fact.
Motion by Voss.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Sullivan, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, I'll make a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations.
I'll second that also.
Second by Sullivan, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Um, so again, this is requesting a variance and this had to come before us because this is a corner lot and according to our, um, new regulations, this corner lot fence doesn't fit what, uh, the corner lot should be. I, I would like to, um, commend both staff and the petitioner for giving us a very comprehensive packet, I think, to make our decision easier. So with that said, I'll make a motion to authorize staff to draft an ordinance granting certain variations regarding fence height and openness at 688 Wertham Circle.
Second?
Motion by Voss, second by Kim, discussion. All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Voss.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes.
Motion carries.
So for the petitioner, that will come back to us on December 8th.